I have such a cloud from place stand and call to order. And I just throw the out, then it will be placed loose in the end of the place.
Well, most gracious, certainly, Father, we're so grateful for who you are and grateful to be able to serve you. We pray that you'll lay on people's hearts during this cold weather to look at homeless people and the people that are short on utilities and things, to help them to get through this here struggling times, Lord. And it's cold out there and it can be bitter for people that's not got the same situations as the other people. We pray that the thing that we do tonight will be pleasing to your eyes as well as your ears. And we just pray that you watch over us and keep our town safe and lead us in the right direction. In Jesus' name I pray.
And may he stand the resolution to the flag.
Leading allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Is there any amendments to the agenda? I have one. We'll make it number four, resolution of abandonment of streets west of Mr. and Mrs. No further add-on to amendment? I hear a motion for the approval of the amendments presented for the record meeting on December 8, 2014.
You have to approve the amendment to the general.
Okay, for the amendment?
Yeah, we have amendment to the rose, we have to approve the amendment to the general.
Okay, I hear motion to approve of that?
Motion to be.
Second?
Second, all in favor? Not opposed? Okay. Now we have the approval of the amendments presented for the record meeting on December 8, 2014. I have a motion.
I have the motion to be approved, if ready.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Not opposed. And we have approval of the financial statement for December 2014. I have a motion.
Motion to be.
Second? Second, all in favor? Not opposed. Under Mayor's comment, I want to welcome to the council, Mrs. Eva Brown. I know she's going to be an asset to us. Everybody's got different ideals, I'll let you forward to that. And you've probably seen the covers been installed over on Weaver Street going into Mud Park, but it'll probably be springtime before we start clearing the land over there. Any lights that you see throughout the town, I'll have several people to call me. Those poles have a tag on with a number. If you'll bring me that number, I'll email it into Cletco so they can come fix the street lights. This office will be closed Monday, 19th, in the observance for Memorial Day. Under a new business level approval of the annual audit for the financial year of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, as presented by Mr. John Wyndham, CPA. Now, Mr. Wyndham, I'll turn that over to you and we just pray you pray it over.
Thank you. For all that gang of others shooting, I need this year. Y'all have yard reports in front of you. We completed the audit of the town mayor on October 21st and transmitted it to the legislative auditor by the statutory due date of December 31st. And we were once again this year able to give you unqualified opinion on your financial statements, which is the best opinion that CPA can give to an audit economy. We did not have any comments, current year comments this year, we had one prior year that's been dissolved. And we'll look at that in just a minute. The balance sheet, which shows your assets and liabilities, the combined balance sheets on page four, which combines, got the general sales tax running, the governmental activities column, and the utilities running, the business type activities column. We're going to go with the individual ones, so I'm not going to spend much time on this combined one, but just to show you that your total assets for the town as a whole, $3,901,237. And you can see the breakdowns of those above. And so now we'll go look at the individual balance sheets that comprise this grand total and the general fund and sales tax running on page six. General fund had total assets $98,522. You can see the breakdown of those, majority of that's in cash, $77,808. And we have liabilities, $28,198, which is over the little bit of the student utility fund. The accounts payable, federal taxes payable will be liquidated within the next 30 to 60 days. That left us a fund balance, we call it, which is nothing more than assets and excess liabilities of $70,324. The sales tax fund right next to it, it had assets of $57,800, which is the cash in the bank at $29,362. And our next month's sales taxes that we received in July of $27,588. We have small bill liability of $1,079, leaving us a total fund balance, net assets and excess liabilities of $56,100. This is all, we call it restricted because of course, sales taxes have been voted on and they are therefore restricted for certain uses and purposes, so the designated thing is restricted. The income statement, revenues and expenditures unpaid at the general fund and sales tax General fund had total revenues of $263,418. And we had expenditures of $591,735. So we had a loss before we transferred any money from our sales taxes, which they're dedicated to the general fund. We had a loss of $328,317 from just general fund operations. We transferred in from sales tax, $255,214. And we had a little game on sale of an asset of $1,518 to reduce that deficit to $71,585. The importance of this here, and the mayor behind Jennifer has met and discussed this at our Asian Conference, our net assets at the beginning of the year, fund balance was We're showing the net loss in the general fund of $71,585, so we've dropped our fund balance down to $70,324, which I guess you can tell, one more year like this, it will be in the red in the general fund. Now, we had some problems in the general fund that led to this. I don't know the exact amount, but I know we had to repay Boise some sales taxes. And we did that by them just holding back our sales tax this year rather than actually writing a check. So that added to our deficit here. And I believe we also, the mayor's told me, we also have a pharmaceutical company we're having to repay sales taxes to. I'm assuming they're holding that out here.
That's been paid.
That's done, okay. And so that has kind of led to this vargain and unusual, unusual loss, and we normally don't have that, so I'm not really overly concerned, I'm just bringing to your attention for you to track it during the year. And, you know, we have to cut back on some expenditures this year, just till we get everybody paid back and we can move forward. Sales tax fund, as you can see, brought in $364,068. That's less than normal due to the Boise repayment, which they're holding out of our sales taxes. We only had the fee for collecting, had an expenditure of $6,915. So we had an excess in that fund of $357,153, and that's before we transferred the money out to the general fund utility fund. We transferred out $362,182. I believe it's just a small deficit of $5,029. And the deficit in sales tax fund can go up and down, it's not, it is not as critical or as crucial as the general fund. It just depends on how much we transferred, based on how much we brought in and how much we still have left in the bank. And I think on the balance sheet, we still have fifty-seven thousand, fifty-seven thousand in cash and money coming in the following months, so the sales tax fund is fine. Our utility fund balance sheet on page 10, total assets in the utility fund are $330,192. The majority of that is easily in plant equipment, which is your water sewer system, which was pretty big, $110,636. And you can see the breakdown of your other assets above there. The restricted cash is simply money that's restricted for repayment of the bond, of the debt. Liability, current liabilities, which will be liquidated within the next 30 to 60 days as far as payables, the payroll taxes, which obviously won't be, but they're still showing as current, $24,231. And we had some liabilities that were payable from that restricted cash that we had, $32,279, which is the payment to the bond in the coming year and the interest in the coming year. The noncurrent liability is everything, the bond payable in excess of one year, $116,375. So we're really knocking the bond down, I think it's only got maybe three or four more years it's paid off. Our total excess of assets over liabilities, $3,157,307. And I'll point out that our unrestricted has got a deficit of $44,338. All that means is, we have some things that are restricted in cash, and that's the $91,009, which is set aside to be in the lines of bond covenants for payment of the upcoming debt. And the fixed assets, the unappreciated value, $3,110,636. But when we show those fixed assets, fixed in nature, the net book value of that $3,110,000 and the restricted amount of cash, we have a negative in our unrestricted fund balance. And so we talked about that in our meeting, and they have said that y'all raise rates. And that's normally what's going to take care of that deficit, and that was going to be my recommendation, and I think that's our recommendation. The following page, I'll take the lessons, kind of those hand and animal we just talked about. The charges for services, the water sewer, $18,168. We had operating expenses, including depreciation, $471,890. And the depreciation was $155,735, which is not a cash expense, but according to accounting principles, it has to be shown as an expense on this statement. So that led us, and we call this just from operations, because we have some non-operating income expenses that don't necessarily relate to directly providing water and sewer services, but yet there's still incoming expense items. So from operations, we're showing, including that depreciation of $155,000, we're showing a loss of $291,722. And that's before non-operating revenues and expenses. The non-operating revenues, they show that we had interest expense of $7,211, interest income of $192 for an expense of $7,019. So now we come down to a loss before transfers in from sales tax of $298,741. We transferred in $106,968 from sales taxes, and we had grants for the sewer improvement project in a little state water grant of $62,994. So that reduced our deficit to $128,779. I'm hoping when we raise rates that that will take care of that. But then once again, in this $128,000 deficit, it's important to note, you've got $155,000 depreciation that you didn't have to spend money on, which is showing as an expense. So taking the $155,000 out of the expense, you've actually had a positive change in net position. The following page is just a cash flow statement. That statement we just looked at is on the accrual basis of accounting, which recognizes payables and receivables, money you earned but you haven't received yet, or money that you owe that you haven't paid yet. This statement, we can vary everything back to a strictly cash basis, the exact cash that came in July 1st through June 30th of 2014. And as I stated earlier, we have certain things we call just operations, and we have other things that are, even though they're revenues and expenses, they're not necessarily related to production of water and sewer. We had a negative cash flow just from operations of $131,568. But then we also transferred in from sales tax a positive $106,968. And then we, our larger capital financing activities, we purchased $91,910 of fixed assets for the town. We paid interest on bonds of $8,361. We paid principal on bonds of $25,000. And we received $85,910 from grants that was brought in. So we have a net effect there of a negative $39,361. Below that, our interest of $192 shows that our cash did decrease by $63,769. But we began with cash of $261,450. With that decrease, we still have cash of $197,681. The cash decrease was about 25% of what we had though. Once again, I feel like the increase in the water rates is one to take care of a lot of this, and it's not going to look this way next year. On page 15 through 26, these are the notes that explain these financial statements we just looked at. But the first note covers page 15 to 20. I'm not going to go over it because it's nothing more than the policy and procedures of the town. You can thumb through it, you can look at it, but these are the policies and procedures that you put in place over the years, that Alderman have, and other, some relate to the laws and regulations that we follow and manage in finance of the town. When we get to page 21, we start getting into some of the individual amounts that we looked at in the financial statement. We have a breakdown of what those relate to, as you can see, number three explains the cash that we have for the town. If we just flip over to the other pages, number four is explains the receivables, where they come from and each fund, and what type of receivable they are. Our capital assets, these are the assets we use in the town to depreciate. The first set of assets we look at here on page 22 are the ones related to the general fund and the different categories there. And you can see the increases and we didn't have any decreases. And this, the bottom half is the accumulated appreciation related to the top half of the capital assets. It's the same schedule as on the following page, and this is related to the utility funds. And the general fund on page 22, the utility fund on page 23. And it just breaks down the figures that we've already looked at on the financial statements. The same thing on through note six and note seven. They show the transfers, where they came from and where they went. Note eight, we break down the payables, just like we previously broke down the receivers. We explain our long-term debt in note nine, and show what we paid out and the balances left. And yeah, it's final payment is August 10th of 2018. Page 25, we just have a couple of other notes describing the restricted cash that we have and what we owe out of that, a comparison of budget gap, which is pretty much irrelevant, it's just required to be in here. And then number 26, our last page of notes, and I just described on the enterprise fund, which is the utility fund, that we had a deficit and that we will raise rates unnecessarily. That's already been done, so that's statement here. Page 28 and 29 is a statement on comparing your actual results for the year with what your budgeted results were for the year. And this is an important statement because there's a law that says that budget to gap differences, as far as total revenues and total expenditures, cannot be more than a 5% variance. And as you can see, it's well, well below that limit, so your budgets and your actual are very close. And the same thing on page 30, that's just the sales tax funds, budget versus actual We have a schedule of fees paid on page 32, or fees paid to Alderman. Page 33 is the required schedule by your, the bond, the bond and USDA bond people, they want to see the water system and sewer system broken down separately, so we just break it down on page 30 pretty separately. The last column is what we looked at on the financial statements, put there, they just do totals. And the same thing on page 34, that's balance sheet on page 33, and then the income statement broken down on page 34. Page 36, we have a, this is the prior year. In the prior year, we still had that issue with the sales tax. There's a little piece that was still there from the prior year, and so we have to disclose whether or not that was taken care of. And you can see corrective action taken, yes, so that'll line that up, and we won't have to deal with that anymore. Page 37, we state there are no current year audit findings, so we have a good clean report this year. Page 38, 39 is a final report on internal control. Internal controls are controls that are put in place to safeguard assets from disappropriation, which we test those controls when we audit, and we found that those seem to be working the way they were designed to safeguard the assets. And then compliance and other matters, we also have you fill out a system survey and compliance questionnaire and adopt it at a board meeting, and it tells us, it answers questions of whether you comply with the laws and regulations governing municipalities, and we test that during the audit, and we did not find that you were anywhere out of compliance, so that's a good report too. So now, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have a few questions. Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Martin, for the audit, and I think we did give thanks to Ms. Jennifer, she does outstanding job.
She does do a very good job.
She keeps everything straight up here in the office.
It makes our audit go much smoother, believing that we had some that come over here, which obviously you did a good job, and you have a clean report this year, good opinion, no comments, and that's what we like. And I appreciate it.
Okay. Your, which you.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
I'll say this anytime.
You all do.
Okay.
Johnny?
Hey, where you going?
Be seeing you.
You been doing a good today?
I can't.
I don't think I've been on either one of them.
There you go.
Okay, under D. Business, we have a form that the mayor approved him since Mr. Starks has moved on.
Wait, to accept his report is written.
We have a motion to accept the motion for.
Motion to be.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm.
Not opposed? Motion approved? Now we have a form that the mayor approved him, so I have a nomination for that.
I nominate one. A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Mark, Mr. Mayor, approve. Will you? Mark?
Okay. Not opposed? So, Mr. Allen, you'll be the mayor pro temp and replace Mr. Starks.
All right.
Okay. And number three, you've got a letter there in front of you. I did a draft on it, and Mark finished it up. It's a resolution to Senator Davis, concerning a low altitude jet flying over Maryville here, I believe it was December 15th, Mr. Currie. He's going to be running for governor of the state of Louisiana, so I hear, and I think he needs to hear from us that we, they can fly them jets somewhere else.
Who's there?
I have a special meeting to talk, and when the jets fly over like that, he goes to scream, and he's hard to get back in control because it's scary than death when they fly over like that.
My kids, you have a mother, you are close.
Any kind of loud voice like that scares them.
I will get this, I will get consent to. I hear a motion to accept this.
I make the motion.
Second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And number four now, you have it in your package there, examine of, what I saw on that map is Third Street. I could be wrong.
You can't see it on that map.
I?
You can't really see the map on that map.
I'm just going with what I saw third up above that, on that map there. Let me circle it, what do you think?
No, I see it, I'm just trying to drive myself over there in my mind.
I wouldn't. I'm going to get by there, see Mr. Brent, and get all this environment. But Mr. Carroll sent this back to Carolyn Hoes. And what we're going to do tonight is just table this, and we'll have to have an open meeting, for our next monthly meeting.
It's been in the streets?
Right.
You're not sure of bad in the streets, but they have, see, they have a meeting.
We will, next month. And that'll be publicized in the newspaper, and we'll have an open meeting at 5:30 next month.
We got court.
I hear a motion to have a resolution of abandonment of streets.
Attorney, convention.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? Okay. Now we're down to the public participation.
When are we going to get our signs for our new city limits process?
Signs of what?
For new city limits.
Oh, I've got to talk to Mr. Welber, and I've heard that, that's all in process, but that'll come on the D.O.T., or maybe no sign, the D.O.T. will be the one that moves it. Do you all say something about that, the regular state limits?
I spoke with Mr. Gallagher, who's over the Louisiana Municipal Association as far as a legal counsel. Played phone tag for a while over Christmas, but we finally got back in touch with each other, and he said the procedures that we took were sufficient to provide adequate notice to everyone and go forward from that. So it's his understanding and my understanding under the legal code that it's correct and accurate to go forward.
Well, I understand that, but that'd have to be sent to Baton Rouge.
I'll check and see with D.O.T.
And then D.O.T. will have to be the one to move the signs. That's what I'll.
That makes sense to me, I can't say yes or no.
They all can't move those signs.
I wouldn't want to mess with the state highways. Will that, will that, will that be counted as an F?
And you did say the rental part been put on those? Right. In Deppin, or whatever. We're tweaking with our budget, and we're, we're working through a slow process here. Hopefully, it's going to get better. And we're, we're working through a slow process here, hopefully it's gonna get better. You wanna make a comment on that, Mr. Sharps?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Do, uh, have any other people like to talk?
I got something.
Go ahead.
We got some holes down through forty-nine, I mean, down Cooper Street, they're really bad. Just across the first speed bump, there's two on one side. And then, where's the other one? Down by the trailer park?
I wonder, maybe it was, uh, we have to get out there first.
They're getting worse.
There's two and then one further down.
And they're getting worse. As you go over the speed bump and hit them because their cars don't just away speed them. You're going that way and you're hitting a hole.
You're always ready, they, they gonna get with this.
Yeah, they gonna be aware.
So the, why is the street they want to ban, what is located there?
It's over there on the street that the water counter's on.
That street?
Um, it's where Floyd Rose.
The straight line in front of Mr. Floyd Rose's house.
David, you gonna, you gonna abandon the whole street all the way from one ninety all the way from there?
No, it'd be, it would be back, back there.
Those streets go across creek and on, on, on cross two, it's gonna be a fortune of it.
You're trying to abandon there.
Where, uh, all they live and, uh.
There's another house back there, right there in that area, you can't see it.
Yeah, that's where, uh, this, I got them to live.
Yeah, so that won't, uh, that won't block anybody from coming in and out.
Yeah.
That's just coming around on the west side, coming around, making it lose, coming out back out the street.
Come in.
Stop hopping.
Calling nice.
There's no other participation, I'll make a motion of, uh, a driver of the meeting. Mayor motion?
Action.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.